Welcome again, everyone, to the 2022 Candidate Forum for the Brainerd City Council. Thank you for coming tonight or watching on Facebook. I'm Tyler Glenn, the Executive Director of the Brainerd Lakes Area Economic Development Corporation, and will serve as your moderator this evening. Tonight's forums are brought to you by the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and the Brainerd Dispatch with support from the Brainerd Lakes Area Community Foundation and Bladech. We also thank the Brainerd Police Department for hosting us here this evening. Please remain as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking so that everyone can hear. Also, please hold your applause until the forum has ended. We ask you politely to turn off your phones or silence your phones. No photography or recording will be allowed during the forum. Today's event is livestreamed on the Brainerd Lakes Chamber Facebook page and will be available for viewing from now until Election Day on their website, brainerdlakechamber.com. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the forum organizers. None of the organizers endorse candidates or political parties. Please refer to your programs for information on the races. All candidates were invited to participate in this forum, and all are present except for Dave Bado and Kelly Bevins, who chose not to participate but will be on the ballot. You are welcome to submit written questions for the candidates either on the question cards provided or by posting a comment on Facebook. If you need a question card, they are available at the back of the room. Or please raise your hand at any time, and a volunteer will give one to you. Please keep in mind that submitted questions remain anonymous and must be addressed to all candidates. Those that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. We reserve the right to screen the questions and may rephrase or consolidate them. If you do not get a chance to ask your question or an answer is unclear, feel free to speak with the candidates after the forum. Each candidate will have 1 and 1/2 minutes for opening statements. Then I will ask a series of prepared questions with up to a 1-minute response. Candidates will also have 30 seconds to make closing statements. We will rotate the order for answering. I will also note that we will be using an audible signal at 15 seconds and then again at the stop. Before we begin, let's give the candidates, community sponsors, venue, and volunteers a round of applause. We will begin this evening with opening statements, and the opening statements, you have 1 and 1/2 minutes to respond or to provide your opening statement. We will begin with Mr. Jeff Chisak.
Greetings, everybody. My name is Jeff Chisak, and I'm here tonight to ask for your vote for the Brainerd at-large City Council position. I believe I can serve well. I have the confidence, and I humbly ask for your vote. I have, I never really decided I was going to run this year until Tad Erickson, who was on the council, decided to leave his seat open, and I thought the best way to serve my community is to run for city council, as I have been involved for literally 27 years working as a companion to the city council on different committees. And I think the city council has been doing a pretty good job in the last handful of years, and I'm actually very proud, proud of the work they've done. I'm looking forward to working with them. I know there's always room for improvement, and I hope I can bring another voice of learning and teaching and instruction and that type of thing and my experiences over the years. And I'm looking forward to not only working with the city council, but the staff and area businesses and just trying to make our city a little bit better. I am a proud citizen. I've been here for, since 1971. I've lived at the same location on 511D Street since 1990. And I'm just hoping that as a new voice to the council and being that I have worked hand-in-hand, I can offer another voice and work together to grow the city and to work effectively for the people of Brainerd. Thank you.
Thank you. And on to Justin Grisula.
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 My name is Justin Grisula. I'm married, lived in the Brainerd Lakes area the majority of my life. I have two adolescent children. Both of them are involved in hockey. I'm running to help make Brainerd, continue to make Brainerd a safer place. We've made some great strides with our zoning. I'd like to see some more work on our streets to help calm them and lower the speeds. I, really, I think I'm just an average guy. I think I'd bring just about everyone's ideas to the council. I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Leonard Skillings.
I am Leonard Skillings. I thank everybody for the opportunity to be here tonight. I was born and raised here in Brainerd at St. Joe's over here back in 1960 and lived here most of my life. I served in the Marine Corps for six years from '78 to '84, and then I came back here to this area and had to go over to Ferguson Falls for a while, learn how to be a chemical dependency counselor. I did that for about 30 years. I'm still working for the state of Minnesota. I've been with them for about 30 years. Lived in Ward 1 down here on South 7th Street for about 30 years. So, I've been around a while. I've seen quite a few of the different things that have happened in the Brainerd Lakes area. I like to think I know a little bit about the town, and, you know, I'd like to see some more business growth in the town, and I'd like to take a look at a couple of other issues, and I'm sure I'll get into them a little bit more when we talk and get asked some of the questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cara Terry.
Or Cara.
Cara.
You almost had it, Tyler.
I almost did.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. My name is Cara Terry. I'm running for Ward 1 seat. I have been a public servant for my, almost my entire adult life. I am not one to sit idle, but I get involved. I purchased my home in Brainerd in 2013. I am married with six kids. We have a blended family of yours, mine, and ours. Three boys, three girls, just like the Brady Bunch. The ours, who is the youngest, Brandon, entered the Air Force a little over a year ago and is stationed at Fairchild Air Force Base in Spokane, Washington. And with him flying the nest, that allowed me a lot more free time. So, I was able to run for city council with the vacant seat. I have a county perspective in working for the county, which I think brings a broader look at issues within not only Brainerd but the county at large. I have previous council experience in serving on the Champlin City Council for a term. I'm also actively involved in our Brainerd Lakes Area Drug Education, or BLADE, group, as well as I chair the Port Board, and I am the Vice Chair of the St. Joe's Foundation Board. I'm from a small town in South Dakota, and I tried the city life and living in Champlin, and it just wasn't for me. I am committed to doing a really good job for the citizens of Brainerd and especially my neighbors in Ward 1, and I would appreciate your vote.
Mr. Gabe Johnson.
All right. Thank you to the organizers. Thank you to everybody who's in attendance, and thank you to everybody watching on the world wide web. My name is Gabe Johnson. I live in Brainerd with my wife, Mary, and my three children. I've lived in southeast Brainerd for 18 years, and throughout my life, even from a child as a Cub Scout into a young adult and as a member of the Brainerd J.C.s, and now the last eight years as a member of the city council, I've kind of always worked to affect positive change in my life. I'm running for a third term, and I'm real proud to have been part of the things we've been doing in the city of Brainerd over the last eight years. I think we've passed some good policies to provide new housing stock, affordable housing. I think we've done great things at the Economic Development Authority, especially working with the Chamber of Commerce with the Destination Downtown Business Competition. That was a, that was a great spark for downtown Brainerd. And I think we've done a lot of providing financial stability in the operations of the government, and I want to continue to do that. And to do that for another term, I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Emily Leclaire.
On the flip side, I'm Emily Leclaire, and I am also running for the Ward 4 seat. It would be my first term serving on city council. I do have broad experience in the early childhood education advocacy, which works with a lot of different agencies throughout the tri-county area as well as throughout the state. I currently serve, this will be my third year, on the Minnesota Head Start Association Board of Directors, and I am a lifelong citizen of Brainerd. My goal, if I am elected, is to represent the voice of the citizens and to be a listening ear to the constituents and their needs and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now transition into our prepared questions. And again, I just want to make sure we are alerting everyone that the, they'll be, we will still be using an audible signal at 15 seconds and again at the stop. Onto question number one, we will begin with Mr. Grisula. Why are you running for city council, and what would be your top priority if you were elected?
I'm running to continue making Brainerd a better place. As I said in my opening statement, we've made some progress with the zoning. I'd like to see some traffic calming, which would slow down our neighborhood, neighborhood streets. Currently, they're designed as highways, and they're used as such sometimes. We can't hire enough police officers to enforce that. That would be my biggest goal, is gradually transitioning to smaller streets, lower speeds, safer streets.
Thank you. Mr. Skillings. Why are you running for city council, and what would be your top priority if you were elected?
Well, I think some people would say, why the heck am I here? Well, I kind of went through a situation, as most of you know. Initially, I was gonna run, and then I backed out, and then I found out I gotta run again. And it's because there's some people out there that would like to see me on the board, on the city council. As far as my top priority, I guess I got a couple of them. One is the streets, and the other is responsible bicycles. And we've got, I see anyway, a problem with motorized bicycles and questionable whether it's a motorcycle or if it's a bicycle and that kind of thing. And, you know, there's that gray area that they talk about that if they got pedals in their bicycle. But there, I saw one tonight driving fast, right on the sidewalk, and it, he wasn't bicycling. He was going because he had a, I don't know, an E1 or whatever it was, but that's what I want.
Thank you. Ms. Terry, why are you running for city council, and what would be your top priority if you were elected?
Thank you. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I am a public service representative, have been for my entire adult life, and I'm also not one to sit idle. I get involved instead of complaining. I get to understand what the issues are, understand local government, and take part. I believe economic development would be one of the top priorities, and when I say that, it's not only to develop businesses, but it's also to look at childcare and housing. The lack of both of those things, I believe, are getting in the way of some of our economic development opportunities. I can speak for some hiring that we are looking to do, and it's difficult for folks to find a place to live, to be able to come to our community to work. So, those would, that would be my top priority.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, why are you running for city council, and what would be your top priority if you were elected?
Thanks, Tyler. That's an excellent question. I'm running, as I said in my opening, to, like I've done my whole life, I just want to affect positive change on the, on my surroundings and wherever I am. And here I am right now, and I want to continue to affect positive change on the city. And secondly, I just want to represent the people of southeast Brainerd, and I want to make their lives a little bit easier and a little bit better as much as we can as a city government. My priority for my next term would probably be Washington Street. We are reconstructing, or MINDOT, state is reconstructing Washington Street in 2026, and it's going to affect how our community looks for the next 40 years. It is important that we make sure MINDOT gets it right. Thank you.
Ms. Leclaire. Why are you running for city council, and what would be your top priority if you were elected?
So, I actually had several voters approach me prior to the primaries to see whether or not I had plans to run in any office. So, I did some research and looked at what would be my best options as far as where I felt I could do the most good, where I could gain the most experience in serving our community better. And I decided to go after the seat because Ward 4 has always had a special place in my heart. I grew up over on Beach Street. I went to Harrison Elementary School, my first apartment with my son. When I was a young, single mother, was over on Pion Street, and so these parts of our community are really ingrained in me personally. As far as priority goes, I think just my top priority would be to bring some more diversity to the table as far as thought process and just experience goes, life experience, just to bring a new look.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Chisak. Why are you running for city council, and what would be your top priority if you were elected?
I'm running for city council because of my experience. I know I'd be a good fit there. I've, I've been involved in local government for 27 years on various boards and commissions. And I would echo what Mr. Johnson said about Washington Street as a top priority. If you look back historically, how Washington Street has been redesigned a couple of times, and look at how that affected people, look at South 6th Street, how that was redesigned. And, and these changes affect a lot of people, and there's always somebody, and lots of people sometimes, that are unhappy. Look at what happened on Mill Avenue. Look at the outrage there was for the community, and we have to focus on that street as a big issue. And people need to speak up if they don't like something. They need to say what is good or bad. The council needs that feedback. MINDOT needs that feedback. Everybody needs to be involved, and that's one of my focuses of being involved, checking with other people, getting, getting other voices of opinion and trying to make a good decision.
Thank you. We will move on to question two. Mr. Skillings, we will begin with you. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
Is that she supposed to be the next person?
Nope. It's Mr. Skillings.
Anyway, well, I think, I think that, you know, the biggest thing is looking at the whole big picture, what's going on, and doing the research that you need to do, gathering the information that you need in order to make a good quality decision. Right now, you know, there's so many things going on in this city that need attention, and we need to sit down as a, as a council at some point and really identify what are the priorities, and so how can we fiscally be responsible with those priorities? That's the way I look at it.
Thank you. Ms. Terry. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
Certainly, I believe in keeping taxes as low as possible, and also understand the need for city services, plowing the roads, garbage services, those types of things. And so, it's really about understanding what the constituents in the community believe should be our top priorities, getting a feel for that, as well as then understanding the services that we need to keep our community running. Certainly, people need streets plowed well to get to work on time. We need garbage service, obviously, to keep our community clean. We also need law enforcement to be able to do their job well. And so, really finding that, the balance, it's a tough balance to strike, but understanding, like I said, the constituents' needs as well as the needs of our community to continue running, to operate smoothly.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, what is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
Thank you, Tyler. That is an excellent question. My philosophy is we should have the highest quality services and the lowest taxes and fees. But that's not necessarily always possible or ever possible. But I think the best way you can get to that or work towards that goal is with long-term planning. You have to know the expenses that are going to come, not just next year. It's not just a one-year budget. You have to look at what the expenses are going to be in 10 years, in 20 years, and there are expenses we have out there that are coming in 60 years, and we have to have those on the radar. And over the last eight years, the city has developed a long-term capital equipment replacement plan, and we're following. And it's working. Unlike my microphone. But for an example, we need three fire engines in our fire department. Each one lasts 20 years. So, we replace it every six to seven years. So, we never have to purchase a bunch at one time and increase taxes. We're just steadily replacing things as they go. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leclaire. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
I guess to start off with, I would say that the important thing as a city council member would be to listen to our constituents and what they feel needs to take priority. We definitely need to make sure that we have all of our basic needs in place and planning for the future, and seeing things that we may see as unforeseeable to plan for even those events would be a necessary thing to do. I would also say, as far as certain items go, I think of just encouraging people to really step in and do their part where we can. I'm sure a number of certain services could be provided by volunteers if we had a more bolstered volunteer program, and that's something that we could definitely work on in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Chisak. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
Thank you. You know, everybody wants good services, and I'm all in favor of that. Everything costs money, and when we assess, that's typically for new roads, streets, and, and infrastructure. And so, in order to do that effectively, planning is important, and we also look at projects that are gonna, that are gonna require assessments, and let's not overbuild. Let's try to keep things at the best cost. And also, when it comes to fees, I'm not interested in raising fees. That's usually just another stream of revenue for the city that sometimes it's just a burden on an individual that's trying to add things or improve their, their property. And so, I'm, I'm all in favor of having good services, but I do want to keep a careful eye on, on where the costs are coming or the expense, where the revenues are coming from as well.
Thank you. Mr. Grisula. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
I would echo Mr. Johnson's response. We all want the lowest taxes possible. We all want the highest services possible. Somewhere in the middle is where we're gonna find what actually works. Long-term planning is definitely important to that. Making cuts where we can, making, as I mentioned earlier, reducing the width of the streets, that reduces expenses. Those are things we need to look at to provide more services without increasing the tax rate.
Thank you. I would like to, again, remind the audience to submit written questions on questions cards, on question cards, or by posting a comment on Facebook. If you need a question card and you're in the audience, please raise your hand, and a volunteer will stop and hand you a question card. Onto question number three. Ms. Terry. The city council recently approved changes in the city charter so that three local nonprofit organizations are no longer guaranteed to receive public funding. These organizations include the Brainerd Community Action, Northland Arboretum, and the Center, which serves senior citizens. Do you agree with the changes to the city charter, and how should the city deal with these nonprofit organizations in the future?
Oof, that's a good question. I do agree with the direction that the city council went. I think to call out specific nonprofits allows an unfair advantage to those nonprofits that do receive the funding. I think going through an application process or some type of grant application process, so it's fair for all nonprofits to be able to secure funding, is really the fairer way to go. Now, I believe fair is something you pay when you get on the bus, so I'm not super supportive of the word fair. But I am supportive of all nonprofits having the opportunity to gain funding from all sorts of different partners, including the city.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson. Do you agree with the changes to the city charter, and how should the city deal with these three nonprofit organizations in the future?
Tyler, I do agree with the changes that the Charter Commission made to the city charter. We have seven council members in the city of Brainerd, but we have a lot of commissions. And we have a lot of citizens out there doing their hard work. They're doing the homework. They're studying the issues that are respective to their commissions, and they're doing the best work they can possibly do. When they send something to the city council, it's not flippant. They seriously thought about it, and they looked at all sides of the issues, and as one of only seven city council members, I'm going to respect the dozens of commissions we have in the city and the homework they do, and I think they made the right recommendation, and I'm glad they did it.
Thank you. Ms. Leclaire. The city council recently approved changes in the city charter so that the three local nonprofit organizations are no longer guaranteed to receive public funding. These organizations include Brainerd Community Action, Northland Arboretum, and the Center, which serves senior citizens. Do you agree with the changes to the city charter, and how should the city deal with these nonprofit organizations in the future?
Well, I would have to agree with Cara. I think that it is important that there is equality among nonprofit organizations, and while I deeply respect, especially the Center and the Northern Arboretum, the Center not just for the donuts, I really feel that it should be a situation where any nonprofit in our area gets the same equal treatment. And if these three had been singled out specifically in the past, and they are no longer being that way, I think that would probably be for the best. I do think, though, as citizens of Brainerd and Baxter, as well as all the lakes area that benefit from these types of organizations, we need to personally take effort to support them.
Thank you. Mr. Chisak. Do you agree with the changes to the city charter, and how should the city deal with these nonprofit organizations in the future?
Yeah, I agree with the changes. As Chair of the Charter Commission, I was very impressed with our commission member, Kevin Jaeger, and, and the way he described, the city shouldn't be in a position of picking winners and losers. And by offering the, the funding that we have been doing, and, and really, we, the city started opening it up now for other RFPs, for other people to come in and essentially tell us what they would do with the money. And it's a, it's an, I don't think there's anyone out there that says these organizations don't do a good job. That's, it was never the intent to think that we're trying to label them as not productive enterprises. And we like to keep them. I don't hear a lot about their side of the losing funding and how they plan to raise more funds. I hope they work on that. It's a significant amount of money they get, so it doesn't mean they're gonna shut down. I think they can still operate if that funding, if, after several years here, is decreased or limited.
Mr. Grisula. The city council recently approved changes in the city charter so that three non, local nonprofit organizations are no longer guaranteed to receive public funding. These organizations include the Brainerd Community Action, Northland Arboretum, and the Center, which serves senior citizens. Do you agree with the changes to the city charter, and how should the city deal with these nonprofit organizations in the future?
I agree with the changes. The city needs to be in the position to choose the best option. Having three nonprofits, while they're good at what they do, they may not have the best solution. Grant programs would be an alternative. There's other ways of funding what we need.
Thank you. Mr. Skillings. Do you agree with the changes to the city charter, and how should the city deal with these nonprofit organizations in the future?
While I agree with what the decision was, that made, yes. You know, I, it concerns me that, in particular, the Center and the Arboretum are gonna need to find some other options. Those two places in particular are such positive things and part of Brainerd, and I just pray and hope that they're able to find, you know, another opportunity where they can get some financial support. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Question four, and question four, we will begin with Mr. Johnson. The River to Rail Corridor includes the Mississippi River shoreline, downtown Brainerd, and the northern Pacific Center area. What, if anything, should the, should Brainerd do to encourage fertile, further revitalization of this corridor or other areas of the city?
Well, Tyler, as you know, we've worked with Bladech on the River to Rail Corridor over the last number of years, and Bladech gave a recommendation to the city to have reduced sack-and-wack fees and reduced building permit fees to spur redevelopment of that corridor. And I think everybody in town has noticed what's been happening out at the northern Pacific Center, what's been happening downtown, and I've heard from business owners in both locations that those incentives make a big difference. They make a big difference on building permits, on sack-and-wack fees. So, I think we need to continue to explore opportunities to find if there are ways government can get out of the way and just let the market redevelop these beautiful spaces we have in Brainerd. Thank you.
Ms. Leclaire. The River to Rail Corridor includes the Mississippi River shoreline, downtown Brainerd, and the northern Pacific Center area. What, if anything, should Brainerd do to encourage fertile, further revitalization of this corridor or other areas of the city?
Well, I would agree with Mr. Johnson's approach of having a more of a governmental stand back and see what the businesses can do at some point. I do think that it is important to support our local businesses, and I can say that I've been really impressed with the growth just at the NPC alone, and the downtown area is always, you know, it's a fun place to go, and I think just maybe encouraging businesses to get there and people to come and visit is one of those things we can do easily with very little effort.
Thank you. Mr. Chizok, River to Rail Corridor includes the Mississippi River shoreline, downtown Brainerd, and the Northern Pacific Center area. What, if anything, should Brainerd do to encourage further revitalization of this corridor or other areas of the city?
What, if anything, should they do to encourage further development? I think they're doing a great job right now, and so to do anything to do further, just continue on the path we're going. That's another reason why I'm very proud of the city council, the work they've done, staff, everybody is focused on, and what a, what a great way to help business. Lower the fees, lower the costs. Government sometimes gets in the way too much, and by getting out of the way, sack and whack fees are huge, and if you can eliminate those, you're gonna spawn business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grisula, the River to Rail Corridor includes the Mississippi River shoreline, downtown Brainerd, and the Northern Pacific Center area. What, if anything, should Brainerd do to encourage further revitalization of this corridor or other areas of the city?
I would agree with the other candidates that we should, as the city, take a step back and allow the development to happen as it is going to naturally occur. There are businesses that are going to naturally occur around residential areas, we're going to naturally have some commercial areas. Reducing fees is a great way to attract businesses, and having a population to support them is a great way to keep them open.
Thank you. Mr. Skellings, the River to Rail Corridor includes the Mississippi River shoreline, downtown Brainerd, and the Northern Pacific Center area. What, if anything, should Brainerd do to encourage further revitalization of this corridor or other areas of the city?
You know, I agree. I think that they've done a good job with it already. I'd like to see them take a step back and maybe regroup, pull those folks together one more time, and ask them, what is it that we can do yet to further the growth and to support you in what we're doing? So, that's what I would say.
Ms. Terry, the same question. Corridor includes Mississippi River shoreline, downtown Brainerd, and the Northern Pacific Center area. What, if anything, should Brainerd do to encourage further revitalization of this corridor or other areas of the city?
I agree with all of the council member, or council, the panelists, and especially Mr. Johnson over here. With the sack and whack fees, that makes a huge difference. I also believe less government is more. However, I would also like to be more engaged and make sure we are bringing the businesses together to talk about what it is that they, they need, or they continue to need from the city, and figure out ways to support them in those needs, whether that's lobbying at the legislature for reduced rules, or what that might look like, but still continue to be engaged in that process to help support them.
Thank you. Again, I want to remind the audience to submit written questions on question cards or by posting comments on Facebook. If you need a question card, please raise your hand. Onto question five, we will begin with Ms. Leclerc. What, if anything, should the city of Brainerd do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
I think that's a great question, first of all. You know, housing is a unique problem, I think. It's not unique to our area. We have a high need for affordable housing that is well-maintained and is easy to access. Personally, I live in a single-family home. It's a rental, and, you know, there's always a concern with the raising of rent that could happen, and whether or not we'll be able to afford those rent increases. I think having more housing available would definitely make it easier for families to feel comfortable living here and starting a family, making their roots here, and that's really what we need to make this community thriving.
Thank you. Mr. Chizok, what, if anything, should the city of Brainerd do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
You know, housing is one of those things that is really struggle, everyone's struggling with it. You know, you look at our neighbors in Baxter and everywhere, and, and I don't have an answer of what can be done. I know the city has been doing pretty well on some of the developments, Dahmer, Brainerd Oaks, and, and different areas like that, but you gotta ask the question, what is affordable? And, and I don't know what the answer is to that because everybody's different, and is there a wide sector of people? You wanna bring in people that can afford housing, well then they have to have jobs that can provide an income to buy that housing. So, we have to be careful about the housing we do develop, and it's, it's affordable in respect to the wages we offer in this area. So, that's about all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Grisula, what, if anything, should the city of Brainerd do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
We've actually started to do a pretty good job on that. We've redone our entire zoning code, allowing accessory dwelling units. I'd like to see the zoning be a little more lenient, allow more things in more places, encourage density. Downtown is kind of a block, and you can't develop multi-use outside of that block. That's something we need to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Skellings, what, if anything, should the city of Brainerd do to, to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
Well, I think that they're doing quite a bit here in Brainerd. I've seen some good things happening, but, you know, the, the one thing I think that might be helpful is to do some kind of survey work in finding out, you know, what it is that the needs actually are. I guess my concern is that I see so many businesses right now that don't have any labor. They, I mean, they're, they're struggling, and there's a couple of businesses I know just right here downtown Brainerd, they shut their doors because they can't find labor. So, you know, if you can't find labor, you know, why are we gonna increase housing necessarily? Are we gonna invite more people in, or I don't know? It's just a question. I think it's got more questions than anything with this whole subject.
Thank you. Ms. Terry, what, if anything, should the city of Brainerd do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
Well, as I mentioned in my initial comments related to my priorities, is economic development and the shortage of housing, affordable housing, as well as childcare. So, yes, I think we need to do more. What that looks like, I'm open to ideas, but I believe it's working with the EDA, the HRA, partnering with the county, see where we can grow opportunities for funding. Housing prices or construction prices aren't cheap right now, and so, for a simple project, it's probably three times the cost. And so, do we ride out the costs initially, waiting to develop those larger housing projects, or, or what does that look like? So, finding out more information that way to Mr. Skellings' point. But partnering with all of the partners within the county to be able to provide affordable housing options would be, would be what I would look to do.
Thank you. We will close with Mr. Johnson. What, if anything, should the city of Brainerd do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
Thanks, Tyler. The city should definitely be actively engaged in trying to help the housing problems we have, you know, but here's what we have done, you know? We have worked with the city of Brainerd HRA, of which I am the chairman, and we fund them each year, and they operate 203 units of public housing. They have 320 vouchers. We have affordable options in this community. Is it enough? Probably not, but it's what we have, and it's what the federal government gives us, and we put it to good use, and that agency is managed very, very well. They're consistently a high performer. You know, we currently work with the Brainerd Economic Development Authority, of which I am the chair, which is administering a DED Main Street grant and some city funds of $865,000 in the River to Rail District, and the number one priority is housing density in the River to Rail District. And finally, we need to work with the Crow Wing County HRA, who has a housing trust fund that is funded at a half a million dollars a year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to question six, and we will begin with Mr. Chizok. In your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
Finding good qualified people to fill the positions. This is becoming one of the, kind of a tragedy of what's happened over the last couple of years with, police have gotten such a bad rap over a number of things done by so, so few people, and we have to give our, just, just the area alone is a, is a, is a welcome mat for people to come from other areas. I know Crow Wing County hired a deputy from New York City. That's what we need to do. If, if we're, when we're short of staff, patrolmen, starting, we gotta look and make it as good for them as we can, encourage our officers and department to excel. They're good people. We get rid of the bad ones and move on.
Thank you. Mr. Grisula, in your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
I would echo Mr. Chizok's sentiment that hiring is an issue. We need to listen to them and have a high enough wage that we're attracting qualified people. Another issue is enforcement. As I said earlier, our wide streets lead to speeding. If we reduce those, that reduces the number of calls, things of that nature.
Thank you. Mr. Skellings, in your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
I think it's respect and support. You know, we've got some fine officers here in the county, in the city, and, you know, we need to do more, I think, in trying to educate our community and do some things, you know, that can help build the rapport between the community and the city police that we do have. You know, they're, they have gotten a bad rap, we know that, and it's because of the few, but, you know, somehow or another, we need to combat that and, and take it into the community, and I think the city, you know, can do some things to try to help that. We need to educate our youth, help them to know who the police officers are in this community, and that they are good people and they are there to help.
Thank you. Ms. Terry, in your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
Thank you, Tyler. I agree with the panelists up here, that recruitment and retention is really very important. I'll just take another little side angle, and that is to encourage our law enforcement to partner with other agencies across the county, including the county. We expect a lot of our law enforcement officers to be mental health providers, community resources, to provide oversight and making sure that our citizens follow the law. It's a lot to expect of them, and we can build additional programs and supports to be able to help them do their job better, but also help them connect better with the, with the constituents that, that we all serve. So, encouraging them, for example, the social workers in the jail, to have a mental health practitioner on the porch with law enforcement. There are so many different opportunities that we're working to pilot right now that we could expand upon to support law enforcement.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, in your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
Thank you, Tyler. I agree with pretty much everybody has said, it's, it's getting qualified candidates employed. We have budget authority for 27 sworn officers in the city of Brainerd. We have been hovering around 23, 24 officers my entire term. With that shortage of three to four officers that we don't have, it causes burnout in the current officers, which causes them to leave. We don't want that. We wanna hire good quality candidates, and we want to keep them here. What we have done is we've proactively worked with the unions on getting raises in their last collective bargaining agreement. They passed it on the first try. We're working well with the unions. Another thing the city can do is hire a good police chief and empower him to do the right training in his department to make sure his officers have a good culture and are empowered to be promoted from within, and our organization can continue to grow and serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leclerc, in your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
I would say probably retention, and I think a big part of that is because police are overburdened with responding to mental health crisis calls. If you call any kind of mental health care provider after hours, you'll get a recording saying, if this is an emergency, please call 911, and without another option, that's exactly what they do. We really need to, like Kara said, work on partnering with other agencies across the county, and really work on bringing in more mental health care providers. We have a huge shortage of that, and with that, the burden just falls more heavily on police officers and on the emergency room we have, and it's just something that we should be able to take care of.
Thank you. Our final prepared question, question number seven, we will go to Mr. Grisula. What is the most significant difference between you and your opponent in this race?
I think we agree on a lot of things. We both wanna help our community. The ways of getting there might be a little different. As I said in my opening statement, I have two young children that, having them is going to impact every decision I make. I think just their different viewpoints is the difference.
Thank you, Mr. Skellings. What is the most significant difference between you and your opponent in this race?
Well, honestly, I don't know my opponent very well, so I couldn't really, it's hard to come up with that answer. You know, I, I'm, I'm, I've been married for 37 years to my lovely wife, Christine. She runs a daycare in this community, so I know about the daycare issues. You know, it's a big struggle. I have a daughter who is, got two kids, and she's a single mom, and she struggles with, you know, paying the price that she has to pay to, for rent, and, you know, I've got a, I got a son as well. He lives down in Fort Dodge, Iowa, so he's not in our community, but, you know, I've been here. I was born and raised here in Brainerd, and I know the people, and I'm more than happy to listen to all the people. You know, my, the predecessor for this particular award won, he said, you gotta listen to both sides of this story, and so if you don't...
Thank you. Ms. Terry, what is the most significant difference between you and your opponent in this race?
So, since I was a kid, my parents moved us around a lot, so I've never had the opportunity to be born and raised somewhere. That's what I hear from my opponent, and I certainly appreciate that wholeheartedly. As a matter of fact, that, that being said, that's why my family had continued to live in Champlin while I worked up here, when I moved up here in 2013, because I wanted to give Brandon, the youngest in our family, the opportunity to be born and raised somewhere. But regardless of where I was born or where I was raised, I build my own sense of community, and I engage wherever I am. As I mentioned in my intro, I was a council member in Champlin. I was also the team parent for all of my children's sports. I served on a human services committee. I was also on the park and rec board. I don't like to sit idle, and I also don't believe in complaining. I get in there, and I do things, and I learn, and I become a part of the community. That's what I'm doing here tonight, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, what is the most significant difference between you and your opponent in this race?
Thank you, Tyler. I just met Emily tonight, so I don't really know much of the differences between us. I would assume there's a heck of a lot more similarities between us than there are differences. But one thing that, you know, I could point to that I do know is different is the city experience. I've been doing this for eight years. I really want to do it for four more years, and then I'll be done, I promise. But, but the difference is, I've been doing it. I've been in the trenches. It seems like people are satisfied with where the city's going, and I'd like to work for four more years to keep going in the right direction.
Thank you. Ms. Leclerc, what is the most significant difference between you and your opponent in this race?
Well, we both have glasses, so. I guess really just, I really shouldn't be here, by any account. I'm a single mom, I have four children, you know, I've struggled financially... I'm a single mom, I have four children, you know, I've struggled financially most of my children's lives because children are expensive, who knew it? So I guess for me, I feel like I'm on the outside looking in, and I want to be the person who other people in that situation can see and say, "Anyone should be able to do it, anyone should be able to serve their community." And that's why I want to be there, serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chizok, to close, what is the most significant difference between you and your opponent in this race?
Well, on the lighter side, he has eyesight. No, he seems like a fine young man. I've never met him until tonight, and I'm glad he's running. It gives me, competition is good, and I hope that people recognize that my 27 years of serving on various boards and commission gives me a great deal of experience. I've got a historical background in the city of Brainerd. You know, I remember, like I said, the different streets that have been repaired over the years, you know. Went to school at Lincoln School in third grade, and then at St. Francis for grade school and Brainerd High School. I played tennis at the new tennis courts in Gregory Park when I was a kid. You know, there's all these different things, you know. I've been in Brainerd for a long time, and I love the city. It's a good place, it can do a lot for people. Just come onboard and get involved, and I'm glad to see the people here tonight are involved, and I wish them all the best.
Thank you. And thank you, all of you, for responding to all of our prepared questions. We will now transition into audience questions. I have four of those questions. We will begin with question one, and we will begin with Mr. Skillings. The city is not just business, it is also the people and how decisions affect them. How do you balance the needs of the residents and the business community?
Well, I think, like I've said all along, the most important thing is to listen to the people. And then gather them closer and hear what it is that they're really saying. You know, I think that that's so important. You know, the same with the business community, you need to listen to them and listen to their needs, and then do some research on your own of looking at what's going on here with the particular decision that maybe needs to be made, and then do your best to meet the needs of all that you can. I know you can't please everybody, and there's gonna be some that just, you know, aren't happy with the decision you make. But I think it's important that you listen carefully to what's being said.
Ms. Terry, the city is not just business, it is also the people and how decisions affect them. How do you balance the needs of the residents and the business community?
That's a great question, and I appreciate the reminder, because much of our conversation is focused on businesses tonight. You know, I really think it's about, as Mr. Skillings said, engaging residents and talking with them about what their needs are, offering engaging programs for families, for single parents, for kiddos in the community, things to keep them safe, things to keep them busy, working with our park systems, our trails, and then asking what their needs are. Two years ago, we had the Blade booth at the fair, and we asked folks what they believed they needed to be engaged in the community. And we got a whole lot of different responses, from a biking club to a splash pad at Gregory Park, bingo, to a whole lot of different opportunities. And so we'd be able to take those opportunities and see what we can build on to help engage our residents even more.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, the city is not just business, it is also the people and how decisions affect them. How do you balance the needs of the residents and the business community?
Thank you, Tyler. I don't, you know, I think in my opening, I gave two reasons why I'm running. And one is I want to affect positive change on this community. And the other reason is I want to represent the people of Southeast Brainerd. And I think it's important to keep the common person in mind when you're making decisions. But I don't think it's the business community and the people are necessarily at odds. Like when we updated our zoning code this year, we made things better for both the business community and for the people who live in Brainerd. And I think we can benefit both interests on almost every decision we make. But to come down to the baseline of it, I represent Ward Four. I represent some businesses in Ward Four, I represent a lot of people in Ward Four, and I'm proud of what I've done over the last few years of getting a Safe Routes to School project in for Harrison, getting brand new playground equipment at J.C.'s Park that just opened this week. Check it out, it's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leclaire, the city is not just business, it is also the people and how decisions affect them. How do you balance the needs of the residents and the business community?
Well, I would start off by saying, we all tend to do better when we're all doing better. It's great to have 10 new stores to shop at, not so much if you have to go in and stock the shelves because there's no one to work them, right? I believe that if we have happy residents, that will in turn create an environment where they want to work more and where people from outside of our area see that we are treating our residents with just exactly what they need. And when we're meeting those needs of our residents and our citizens, then people will be more likely to move in from out of the area. Likewise, I don't think that, like Mr. Johnson said, I don't think it's mutually exclusive. I think we can certainly benefit the needs of our residences, or residents rather, and our businesses at the same time. Also, J.C.'s Park is great, I already took my kids there.
Thank you. Mr. Chizok, the city is not just business, it is also the people and how the decisions affect them. How do you balance the needs of the residents and the business community?
Well, the needs of the resident community are simple. I mean, people want their water to run, they want their electric to turn on, they want their streets plowed. So we maintain all that. We give people good parks, and we promote business. And people like to go shopping, they like to buy hardware, they had a place convenient. And so there's all these different things, there's a blend. And when we see people upset about, you know, that lives in the residential community, they're coming before the city council, like such as a fence that's bothering one neighbor or another. We've seen that recently. So you have to make a decision, you have to do what is fair to each neighbor, and you have to look at the entire community, what's gonna affect one side of town affects the other. So you try to balance that. And business and resident is a, it can be a blend, and I think we're doing a pretty good job now.
Thank you. Mr. Grisula, the city is not just business, it is also the people and how decisions affect them. How do you balance the needs of the residents and the business community?
I would agree with the other candidates. It is definitely a balancing act. I think the main thing would be understanding their end goals, what they want to get out of whatever's happening, and helping each other understand where they're coming from and finding a solution that works for the majority.
Thank you very much. We will transition into audience question number two. We will begin with Ms. Terry. Please comment on any concerns you have relative to the planned reconstruction of Washington Street. How can the council work most effectively with the community and with MINDOT?
That's a very good, very good question, and actually was one of my opportunities that I wanted to highlight if that question came up. I think we have a very good opportunity to be able to help form what that stretch of road should look like and how we better engage the businesses along those roads. I have not had an opportunity to delve into the planning that has already taken place, but I look forward to delving in further as we move further along into the project. I also am looking forward to, I guess, working with the Department of Transportation and sharing our views and being heard, ensuring that we're being heard by the state agency, that they're taking into consideration the recommendations that we bring forward to be able to better Washington Avenue.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, please comment on any concerns you may have relative to the planned reconstruction of Washington. How can the council work most effectively with the community and with MINDOT?
90 seconds for any concerns I have on the Washington Street reconstruction. I'm gonna say, my primary concern has been non-motorized crossings. How are people going to get from the north side of the street to the south side of the street? A significant number of people in Southeast Brainerd walk to Cub Foods to get their groceries. How are they going to cross Washington Street? That's been the primary concern I've been pressing to MINDOT when they've been meeting with the city. But there are a number of concerns. There are businesses that have parking lots right up on the street that they're worried they're gonna lose. There are curb cuts, access to businesses that are at play. There's a lot of left turns MINDOT is taking away or is proposing to take away, so accesses to businesses will be cut off that way. I fear they're trying to turn MINDOT into Division Street, and it's not really good. The one thing I will do with the city is I will hold that municipal consent and not consent to them construct a road until we have the vast majority of people in this community in support of it.
Thank you. Ms. Leclaire, please comment on any concerns you may have relative to the planned reconstruction of Washington Street. How can the council work most effectively with the community and with MINDOT?
As someone who is frequently a pedestrian, often with young children on that Washington Street route, I would say that safe crossings would definitely be the highest priority. We do have a lot of pedestrian traffic, and most often, as far as I've seen, it's usually elderly folks or folks with young kids. And it's scary enough as it is to get them safely across those busy streets, and just making sure that those children and those elderly people and everyone in between is able to get to where they need to go safely is of the highest importance. Secondly, I would say also, I do have a concern for those businesses on Washington Street. As you guys know, we do have a lot of businesses on Washington Street that would be affected by this. So getting community support from our citizens, like Mr. Johnson said, it is key. We need to have support from our citizens, we need for them to know what's going to be happening every step of the way, so no one is bamboozled.
Thank you. Mr. Chizok, please comment on any concerns you have relative to the planned reconstruction of Washington Street. How can the council work most effectively with the community and with MINDOT?
All of the above. No, it's gotta be done right. This is why I mentioned earlier, it's a big project. This thing is huge, and people need to speak up. The safe crossing is so important, and when you talk about what is safe, I've always said, you can't, government can't make anything, you know, government cannot make your life safe. You have to take personal responsibility. But when we're putting volumes of traffic and people crossing streets, you have to have some sort of mechanism in place that there's plenty of time and people at least have the feeling of being safe. But again, you're only as safe as the next person texting while they're driving and not paying attention. But still, I think it's important that MINDOT plan this and the city council go with something that's gonna keep pedestrians safe as much as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Grisula, please comment on any concerns you may have relative to the planned reconstruction of Washington Street. How can the council work most effectively with the community and with MINDOT?
Pedestrian access is a huge concern. It's a high-volume street, people need to cross it. We need to have safe crossings for them to do so, enough time to do so. We need access to those businesses. It will redefine Brainerd. There is no doubt about that. It's a major thoroughfare. We need to work with MINDOT and businesses and residents to make sure that we get it right, because we can't change it.
Thank you. Mr. Skillings, to close with you, please comment on any concerns you may have relative to the planned reconstruction of Washington Street. How can the council work most effectively with the community and with MINDOT?
Boy, I hope the council can have some answers for that, because I'm concerned, I've been in state in play for 30 years, and unfortunately, the state tends to work like this. They make a decision from up here at the top, and then they go and ask the people down below, and then they say, "Well, we're doing it this way anyway." You know, and I hope that that's not the case here. The pedestrian traffic is a big issue, that's for sure. And, you know, this is a city street that comes through Brainerd, and I think it's important that it remains a city street and not a U.S. highway coming through here. It can't be both, it just can't. So we need to look at that.
Thank you very much. We will transition to question three. We will begin with Mr. Johnson. In which ways can you envision working collaboratively with the city of Baxter?
Oh, we do so many things together. We work on a, our fire department is, this one fire department, we have one prosecution agreement with the prosecuting attorney, we have so many things we work on together. Last year, when Baxter was having a problem with their water plant, we sold them water, we sold them at a rate discounted from what we even charge citizens of Brainerd. We work, I think we work really well with Baxter, and I think anytime there's an opportunity to collaborate, I think the city of Brainerd is on board with doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Leclaire, in which ways can you envision working collaboratively with the city of Baxter?
Well, I think we work together already pretty well. In fact, I've had to, on more than one occasion, explain to my children that Baxter and Brainerd are actually separate cities and we're not just one. I know it can feel like that sometimes to those of us who live here and work and play here, because we are so closely knit together. I guess I would just try to bolster that relationship and keep in mind that the citizens of Brainerd, from our point of view, need to be at the forefront.
Mr. Chizok, same question to you. In which ways can you envision working collaboratively with the city of Baxter?
Brainerd Lakes area incorporates so much. Baxter is part of that. I consider Baxter essentially not another city to the west, it's part of Brainerd, it's part of the Brainerd Lakes. And any collaboration, like Mr. Johnson said, that we're already doing, you know, I saw that water exchange they did, it was fascinating, you know, it was fantastic that we're able to help out. Baxter, I'm sure, would help out Brainerd when the need arises, if ever one occurred. It's a fascinating dynamic. I think Baxter's in a great position for development. We need to share off their development. In many ways, we can do that without affecting it negatively, and it can be explored, and I think the Baxter City Council and Brainerd City Council have worked well together and will continue to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Chizok. Mr. Grisula, in which ways can you envision working collaboratively with the city of Baxter?
We are one community. There is so many things that we share between us. You know, we do need to work on getting more businesses to come to Brainerd over Baxter. The city council's job is to prioritize Brainerd. And while we have a bunch of agreements and work well with Baxter, that's the city council's job. We need to prioritize Brainerd and make sure that our residents and our businesses are being taken care of.
Thank you. Mr. Skillings, in which ways can you envision working collaboratively with the city of Baxter?
Well, I think like Mr. Johnson said, that, you know, we continue to do some real positive things with the communities already. There's so many things that we do, and we need to continue with them collaborations. And again, too, we do have the city of Brainerd that we need to look out for. And, you know, I remember not too long ago, hearing a joke around town that you can't buy a pair of pants in Brainerd, you gotta go to Baxter, you know. And we need to have some businesses in Brainerd, too. We need to do some stuff to retain some of the businesses we have and to do some more growth, so that we have some other positive things going on that are gonna help our revenue here in the Brainerd area.
Thank you. Ms. Terry, in which ways can the you envision working collaboratively with the city of Baxter?
To Mr. Johnson's point, there is a lot of coordination with the city of Baxter. Some potential opportunities, and I'm not sure if they all exist, so forgive me, Councilwoman Johnson, convening councils together on a regular basis to have conversations about what community issues they're facing as opposed to what community issues that we're facing, understanding each other's strategic plans and the directions that they want to take the city of Baxter and the directions we want to take the city of Brainerd. Partnering with our local law enforcement entities and/or city agencies, not just Baxter, but across the county in terms of training opportunities for our law enforcement, our community members, et cetera, supporting each other, each community with housing opportunities or options, and figuring out a plan that we can implement potentially across the county as opposed to looking singularly at our communities, because it is a county problem in terms of housing, childcare as well.
Thank you very much. And finally, question four, and we will begin with Ms. Leclaire. How are you able to work with those who do not share your opinions?
You know, I have a deep respect, I think, for people in general. I've always felt that even if someone's opinion is not one that I share, it's something that's... that should be valued and respected. And so I feel like if I don't agree with you, it doesn't mean that we will disagree on everything, for one thing, and it certainly doesn't mean that we can't work together. You know, I think we are living right now in a very divided-feeling nation, if you pay any attention at all to the media. But it doesn't mean that we can't be a united community. And I feel like that's what we need to strive for and I feel like already, that's the way it feels to me. I don't feel a lot of divisiveness, not even in this room. And I think that that is, you know, that's optimal, that's what we want.
Thank you. Mr. Chizok, how are you able to work with those who do not share your opinions?
Well, as I do all the time, I, you know, nobody agrees all the time with Jeff Chizok. And you work through it. You listen to each other's side of the story, engage, find out where you differ, see if you can come to common ground. If in the end, you disagree, usually on a public body, you go to a vote and the majority wins. And you move on. You don't hold grudges, you, hopefully there's no animosity after that. Sometimes it happens and you just have to move on. That's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grisula, how are you able to work with those who do not share your opinions?
A lot of times, we want the same things. It's just different ways of getting there. So understanding that makes it a little easier to work with them. Finding the exact way there is a process. We all have our own opinions and we all love our own opinion more than anyone else's. Sometimes you have to take a step back though and listen to the experts in a field about something. And I think that's what needs to happen is we need to come together, figure out the end goals, and discuss the issue while consulting experts, if there are some in that area.
Thank you very much. Mr. Skillings, how are you able to work with those who do not share your opinions?
I kinda like what Connie Alissio talked about, if I remember correctly. She talked about there's two sides and then there's the middle that's the facts. And, you know, you need to do some research, you need to listen to the other side, you know, because there always is the other side. And then you need to try to put all that together in perspective to the decision that you need to make and focus on the positive. You know, don't focus on the negative. I'm a real believer that the more you focus on the positive, the better the outcome for all of us, so that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Ms. Terry, how are you able to work with those who do not share your opinions?
Man, I welcome it. I mean, what a great world it would be if everyone had the same opinion as me, for me. However, that probably isn't the best world for everyone else. So I appreciate people who don't agree with me. I try and surround people, myself, with people who don't agree with me because I believe differing opinions brings about a better outcome all the time. So I seek differing opinions, I listen to differing opinions, I consider differing opinions, I also look at data, I look at information around different ideas, and I incorporate all of that together to make the best decision that I can.
Thank you very much. And finally, Mr. Johnson, how are you able to work with those who do not share your opinions?
Oh, pretty easily Tyler. I'm glad I'm the only incumbent here. I'm gonna steal a line from Dave Pritchett, any incumbent would have used it, but it's, and we have this at the council and it's good, but it's important to disagree without being disagreeable. And that's how you work together in a public body. You're not always gonna agree on every issue, but it's important that you act respectful and don't act disagreeable in your disagreement. And I'm a bit of an expert at that because I am the sole no-vote on many, many items. I think I took the crown from Mary Coop after she retired. And I also think it's important to listen to the people you disagree with, they'll teach you something. They're probably looking at it from an angle you hadn't considered before.
Thank you very much. We will end with our closing statements and with this, we will begin with Mr. Chizok. You have 30 seconds to provide a closing statement.
Well, I'm asking for your vote. I hope I can earn that. I've worked hard for the public for the last 27 years, I have a lot of experience. And if you get one of these in the mail, please don't throw it away. There's a phone number and a email address on there. If you have any questions for me, please contact me, call me, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Mr. Grisula, 30 seconds for a closing statement.
First off, I'd like to thank everyone that helped put this together. An opportunity to see everyone's differences is really helpful when you're deciding your vote. I hope I've convinced some people to vote for me. I would appreciate the chance, the opportunity to serve.
Mr. Skillings.
You know, I've been in recovery for 39 years, that's something I'm really proud of. There's a lot of people in this town that know me and, you know, I just ask that you share with your friends and that, that I would appreciate your vote. I know that there's quite a few people that already stepped up and I appreciate that. Otherwise, I wouldn't be sitting here, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Terry, your closing statement.
Thank you to everyone who put on the event tonight as well as the volunteers tonight. I very much appreciate that. Also, thank you to all in the audience and on Facebook for participating. It's really important to be engaged in your government. And that's what I'm looking to do. I'm looking to be engaged in the government, to be able to serve the constituents of Ward One, but also the city of Brainerd and to help make, continue to make, this a really great place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, closing statement.
Thank you Tyler. Again, I'm Gabe Johnson, I've been doing this for eight years. I think the city's in a better place. If you agree with me, I humbly ask that you vote for me and let me try to keep improving the city for another four years. Thank you.
And Ms. Leclaire, your closing statement.
I just wanna thank everyone who's taken time on other evening to be present either in person or to watch online. It is so important to be engaged with even the smallest elections. I think these ones have, the most impact really is our local and city elections. I would seek your vote for Ward Four and if nothing else, if not elected, if elected, I just wanna say that I'm happy to be here and I'm honored to have met Gabe in person finally, and thank you.
Well, thank you all. I personally want to thank the candidates that are here this evening with the city of Brainerd and previously with the city of Baxter. It's been my honor to moderate this evening, so, thank you. And that concludes tonight's forum. Let's give one more round of applause to the candidates, community sponsors, event venue and volunteers. You have the opportunity to find out more about our candidates and voting information at the side of the room there, there's tables over there with information available. Remember to vote. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th, and early voting begins Friday, September 23rd. Please go to votefor11.org for accurate information regarding your voter registration, what's on your ballot and ways to vote. And on behalf of the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce, League of Women Voters and the Brainerd Dispatch, I want to thank you all for coming tonight and have a great evening and a safe trip home.